Call to order the Gladstone City Council Special Meeting for February twenty second, two thousand and twenty-two. It's five thirty P M. Per the Governor's Executive Order twenty dash sixteen regarding compliance with Oregon's public meeting laws. The city of Gladstone is abiding by social distancing requirements during the coronavirus pandemic. Because of the surge in COVID numbers, the city council meeting will be conducted using the Zoom platform. The council members and staff will be shown as panelists and those watching the meeting will be attending. Zoom access instructions can be found on the meeting agenda. Members of the city council, staff, and the public all have access to this call. Public comments are allowed, and for those that signed up to speak through Tammy Bannock, we will call you up in the order your notice was received. For those that have not signed up beforehand, you will be called up afterwards. And the public will have a time limit of three minutes per person. We will not have a consent agenda nor business from the council. The only item to be discussed is fire and medical services delivery options. Tammy, could you please call the roll?
Counselor Ripley.
Yes.
Counselor Alexander.
Yes.
Counselor Tracy.
Here.
Counselor Hartman.
Present.
Counselor Todd.
Here.
Counselor Gollington.
Here.
Mayor Stempel.
Here. Could everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. So before we start, I would like to declare a conflict of interest. My husband works for the Gladstone Fire Department and he's currently in one of the captain positions. And because this discussion specifically addresses those positions, I will recuse myself. And Council President Matt Tracy will chair the rest of the meeting. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna go ahead and run down the agenda. Staff, is there another script that you have for me? Or just let me run the agenda and emphasize that we'll take comments after an agenda item free, correct?
That is correct, Counselor. That's fine.
So the regular agenda goes as follows. And item number one will be fire and medical services around the nation. This is going to be Church Chief George Dunkle. If I mispronounced it, my apologies. Special Districts Association Oregon Representative and Dr. Mark Houston, Gladstone Fire Department EMS physician. They'll be presenting on the fire and medical services around the nation. Agenda item number two is current service delivery in Gladstone and options to consider. Presenting will be Chief Huffman, who is our Gladstone City Fire Chief. He'll be presenting a few options here and we'll go ahead and cover that as he presents them. Then agenda item number three will be public comment. And I'll ask that we hold public comment until this agenda item. As Mayor Stempel did mention, the folks who signed up will probably go in order first. And then we'll take public comments from the public as folks raise their hand and want to speak. Agenda item number four will be a city council discussion for next steps. So that's our agenda for the evening. Staff, I believe I'm turning it over to you, am I not?
Thank you, Counselor Tracy, and good evening, City Council. At this point, I'm gonna hand it over to Fire Chief Huffman, who will introduce our first two speakers. And we'll start with our presentation.
Good evening, councilors, citizens of Gladstone. If you give me just a minute, I'm gonna share my screen here. Can everybody see that? Thank you. Good evening. As we talked about, tonight's session is going to focus on the condition of fire and EMS services in Gladstone and the need for action to continue these services. I'd like to introduce our guests that are here tonight and then give a couple of them a chance to give some opening remarks. Tonight, we have with us Dr. Mark Houston is our Gladstone Fire Department Medical Director. He's our emergency medical services physician. Fire Chief George Dunkle retired. He is now a senior consultant, excuse me, senior consultant for the Special Districts Association of Oregon. Director Jim Seering, Clackamas Fire District Board of Commissioners, Directors, excuse me. And Fire Chief Nick Brown from the Clackamas Fire District One. Now, I'd like to give Dr. Houston a minute to share with him why emergency services are important and why the fire department is part of emergency medicine. Doctor?
Can you hear me okay?
We got you.
Excellent, thank you. Well, good evening, councilors and citizens of Gladstone. I'm Mark Houston. I'm a board certified emergency physician who works several hospitals in the area, including Silverton, Mount Hood, and Meridian Park. I've been an emergency physician since two thousand and four and EMS trained. I'm Medical Director for Gladstone Special Services Division of AMR and multiple other agencies in the area. And so I've been pretty active in state and local EMS for over fifteen to sixteen years at this stage. I think Chief Huffman asked me to basically explain in part why EMS and fire department work together. The fire department was geographically designed in our country to be within specific regions and time arrival times to house fires. And so geographically, they're specifically located at that area. EMS is actually relatively new. So it actually really only came out of a paper that came out in the nineteen seventies. So we've only had EMS and paramedics and everything we associate with it since the seventies. Obviously, because of the concern for making the ability to get to medical calls as equally important as fire calls, they decided that it wouldn't be a bad idea to incorporate the EMS services into fire. There are several systems in the United States. Specifically, there are dual response systems, which is what we are in the Portland area. And that's where you have a fire company will arrive and be dispatched to a medical call at the same time as an ambulance. There are certain agencies in the area that have the ability as fire departments to transfer. However, most usually kind of transfer through AMR. I've been actively involved in basically the training of all of your EMTs, paramedics, and EMT intermediates. There's actually four levels of care providers within EMS, including first responder. And we do monthly meetings where we do, well, up until COVID, unfortunately, training, hands-on, and basically question answer. Any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Houston. I think we'll hold questions until we're done. I'd like to go ahead and introduce Fire Chief George Dunkle. George, can you also share your experiences with fire and emergency services within the state of Oregon?
I'll be happy to, Chief, and thank you very much. But before I get into that, one of my side things that I do now in life is I do a lot of trainings for special district governments, local governments around the state in ethics and in public meetings and what have you. And I wish I would have known the mayor was going to declare a conflict of interest because I would have taped it and used it in my class. That was very well done, so I couldn't have taught it any better. In my prior life to what I'm doing now with special districts, I was a fire chief, as the chief said. And I want to thank him for inviting me. I don't get a chance to bring that up very often anymore. But I was fortunate enough to work with agencies that went through mergers, consolidations, annexations of cities. I started out my career with Washington County Fire District Number One, which was a rural fire protection district in western, central and western Washington County. Today, that district is the central nucleus of Toowal Valley Fire and Rescue. I had the privilege of working with Toowal Valley Fire and Rescue during most of its expansion and development. I was a chief officer in nineteen eighty-nine and left there in nineteen ninety-eight to become the fire chief out of St. Helens. And in the eight years that I was there, we went through a merger with Rainier Fire District to form Columbia River Fire and Rescue, which now serves the greater part of Columbia County. And it is a transport agency. I heard the doctor talk about in the metro area how most of that is privately transported. In my area in Columbia County, the majority of the ambulance transports are done by the fire service. I currently work with Special Districts Association of Oregon with a lot of local governments. I worked some with cities, but generally when I work with cities, it's projects like this where they're looking at forming a special district for a park and rec or library or fire or something. I've done quite a bit of work with that. I'm currently working with the fire districts in Union County, the city of Union and the Union and the fire districts that surround that small city in forming a rural district that will provide fire and EMS services to the majority of Union County except for the city of Legrand. I'm also assisting Jefferson County Fire District Number One and Jefferson County EMS. It's two special service districts, fire districts and the special service district in the Madras area that are on the verge of, through an IGA, which is something that you're looking at this evening, to an intergovernmental agreement, they're looking at combining their services beginning July one of twenty-two. I basically came to kind of tell you a little bit about what's going on in the state. I kind of shared that by just the projects that I'm working on. I can also share with you that there's cities like you and larger ones that are looking at ways of providing regional services in a better model and what they're doing today in improving the services within their city. I want to say that the timing of your annual report by your fire department, I had a chance to review that today. And there's some excellent data in there that would be very helpful to the council. I commend the fire chief for getting that out. I think what I'll do is I'll just be available to answer any questions. I've gone through the agenda and seen the material the chief's prepared. It's pretty well laid out. I know that Chief Brown is here from Clackamas County and he's definitely versed in a lot of things that I would have to say. I just, one thing that I want to remind the city of Gladstone Council about is your city is located in Clackamas County, which, when I started in the fire service, there was multiple fire agencies in Clackamas County. Now, I believe the majority of those are with Clackamas County One. And I think some of Clackamas kind of may be served by Toowal Valley. I'm not exactly sure how those boundaries lie, but anyway, I'm here. I appreciate being here and appreciate the time with you. Congratulations on even taking this project on. It's a very forthright thinking by the council to be looking at options for their service.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate both you and the doctor's input. I'm sure there'll be follow-up questions from the council and the public comment. Just to continue on it, as past sessions that we've had with council and strategic planning or work sessions, or I've mentioned in my monthly reports, and as Chief Dunkle said, also reported this in the annual report for last year, there's been a consistent description of the condition of Gladstone Fire Services and the challenges we've had over the last two years and more documented over the past decade plus. I'd like to describe now the services that are surrounding our area and how those compare to what is available within the city of Gladstone. The standard around us, as Chief Dunkle mentioned, most of the area around us is provided by Clackamas County District One and Toowalton Valley across the river on our southern and southwestern borders. Those are all full-time departments, but I can tell you that the surrounding departments in the whole area in the county, the standard is providing a three-person fire engine. Those are full-time people, so you can get out the door consistently to meet response standards, not only for emergency medicine, but for water rescues, hazardous material accidents, and fires, of course. And as you saw in about a year and a half ago, I described to you why time is important for fire because the contents within your house burn much faster than they have in the past. And the doctor can speak more to their reasons for medical speed and urgency for delivering that care. And for those reasons, you want to be able to get out of the door quickly on a nine-one-one call with a full-time crew. That is the standard for all the departments that surround us. In addition, one of those firefighters on the fire engine is a paramedic. Now, we currently do not have a minimum staffing for paramedics. Our minimum staffing is for EMT basic level, which is not bad, but is definitely not the level of care you can receive from a paramedic. The capability of Gladstone in comparison to the neighboring agencies around us is that we have an on-call deployment model. And I want to back up and review real quick what that means. Prior to the pandemic and in years past, the Gladstone Fire had an on-call model. And then you remember the siren that would go off. Today, that's done by pagers and smart apps on phones to where firefighters are notified of emergency after, let's say you call nine-one-one. Nine-one-one would activate this alerting system. And firefighters at home, at work, or maybe somewhere hanging around the fire station are alerted. Enough firefighters come to the station and then they respond to the emergency. That's a very valid model in many areas. It is not very current in any urban area that I've been able to find in the nation. So the reason I say that is, is there's a slight delay in time, which might be minutes, to get from home, work, to the fire station, rally enough crew together and get on a fire apparatus and then respond to the scene. The demographics of Gladstone put us in a position to where our neighboring agencies can beat us to our own calls within the city on that kind of model. Let's fast forward a little bit to the pandemic. And I stopped the on-call deployment model because of pretty much exposure and quarantine possibilities. If we had all of the personnel come back on a callback and somebody was exposed to COVID, we could realistically quarantine the whole department and be out of business. So I went to a model that is more similar to what our agencies around us provide, but I'm doing it with part-time on-call personnel, which has proven very difficult. So to summarize that, currently, we staff a two-person rescue squad as a minimum. But my standard is to try to staff three people on the fire engine. And if you noted in some of my documents, that is the state-recognized standard for a fire company is an engine wants three people on it. That is also the national minimum. I have to admit, we were down to one person for a few hours on Christmas because we couldn't get anybody to commit to working. But we did get that staffing upgraded later in the day. We strive to maintain a three-person engine. And we do currently have some paramedics. But two of them, actually all three of our current paramedics, excuse me, we have four. Three of the four have had job offers and will be leaving us in the next two months. And another one is currently seeking employment, and I'm confident he will get offered a job. Typically, we're able to get three people out the door over the last couple of years. And I can say that's about it. If we have to call more personnel back, we can do the on-call alerting system, which we do for fires and major emergencies. But we're lucky to get one to three people back in a timely manner. And if you remember my previous presentations of minimum response force for a structured fire at a house is about fifteen people. And so we're behind the curve on providing the level of response that's outlined in our documents, the standard to cover, the strategic plan and previous evaluations. So why are we here today? The challenges have just compounded over time. But I think this is a really good time to emphasize something. It really is important to state that the condition of the fire and emergency services today in Gladstone is not from a failure of the past fire department operations, past fire department leadership, past city leadership, or elected officials. This is due to a change in conditions around us and the expectations of citizens in Gladstone and around us and frankly nationwide. So what can we do? Doing nothing is not an option, in my opinion, as the fire chief. I don't believe public safety could be jeopardized by doing nothing. And I don't want this to sound alarming, but Gladstone Fire cannot sustain operations and must take action to maintain our emergency services. It does sound alarming, but I can guarantee you that because of our size and our demographics, we have helped surrounding us. So we're not really at risk, but we're at risk and need to question what services are we going to provide in the future. Part of this would be a couple of things. We've talked about many options over the last two years. One of them is becoming all volunteer. Now, let's play that out for, if we had all volunteers in the city of Gladstone, we would still need management of the program and the department and all logistics administration that go with it. So we would have to maintain a fire chief and a training chief. And then if we had all volunteers throughout the rest of the department, that's what we'd rely on staffing. As I've stated multiple times, recruitment and retention of volunteers or paid on-call is extremely difficult, not only within Gladstone, but nationwide. Let's look at some of the factors of that model, though. There is strong community involvement when you take care of your own community. There is reduced cost, obviously. It also helps train firefighters for those seeking full-time jobs. There's an opportunity to help young people prepare for first responder jobs and volunteer for their community. Some of the weaknesses in this system, though, are the recruitment and retention. And I say, I can kind of repeat that enough, but it is an extremely challenging environment nationwide for volunteer and on-call firefighters. Part of that reason is because of the training compliance. There are response standards and training standards that must be met to maintain qualifications to respond on incidents. And in general, can that individual meet the response standards? Are they able to go on enough calls to stay proficient in their job? Some of the threats to this model are the potential of little or no staffing, slow response times, recruitment challenges, inconsistent EMS levels, and overuse of mutual aid. We can talk about that later, but mutual aid is a mutual agreement where we help each other on a mutual number. Once that starts becoming supplementing services, it becomes a strong impact on budget. And those things will be monitored and are monitored and will be considered in the future on compensation. So let's break down the on-call model. There's a few different ways of looking at it. All volunteers, if we went all volunteer, there would definitely be a reduced cost of over a million dollars to our current budget. But the risk would be slow to no response times at all. The part-time on-call model, if we did very similar to volunteers, except we paid them a small amount as a wage, we could maintain, hopefully recruit more people. We've had no luck with that. And that would save us about six hundred and sixty thousand dollars. We would still need to retain a chief and a training officer. If we continue with our current model, which would be supervisor captains on each shift, a chief and a training officer, we would be at our current budget. And that, again, is not sustainable because of the recruitment of on-call personnel. What is another option? Well, we could actually, as the state national standard says, have a full-time crew in the station. The benefits would be it's a dedicated response. We'd be able to get out the door quickly. We'd have crew continuity, which is something that's not talked about much. But when you work in an emergency environment and you work with the same people, you tend to get a crew continuity that improves performance and expectations and efficiency. The deployments will be better and you have a paramedic-level care twenty-four-seven throughout the year. The opportunity to be able to continue the on-call program. If we had on-call or volunteers, we would still need to have a couple dozen of them at least to provide the extra force within the city. Again, that's hard. We would still need additional people, as I just said, to meet the standard of covers, sorry, standard of cover. There's no depth to provide FTE vacancy coverage. So if we had people that were sick or injured, it'd be really hard to maintain that without an increased overtime budget or more dependency on volunteers or on-call. Additional threats besides overtime would be fees for effective response force. There are not any at the moment. Well, actually, there are some, and Chief Brown can talk about those. And obviously, the retention is a big, big problem. Funding for this is not, this is an unfunded possibility currently. And it would be over six hundred and sixty thousand dollars just for personnel costs to add six more people to have a fire engine staff twenty-four-seven out of this fire station. There are a lot of associated costs with this that are not calculated in here, they're estimates, but it would be closer to a million dollars when we have other training costs, recruitment, and other issues that would bring us up to that million-dollar mark. Another option, as stated, in September twenty-eighth, we investigated and started a conversation with Clackamas County for a cost-neutral contract option. The strengths in this would be increased in emergency response capabilities within Gladstone, including paramedic service. It would be a standalone support service, meaning that Clackamas would be able to maintain everything that it takes to provide that fire engine out of Gladstone. The logistics, the administration, the training, all those things. The opportunities would be a possible insurance service or ISO rating. Will be up for a rerating here this year. What that means is ISO provides insurance companies with data on the communities on safety and risk. Our risk rating would be improved if we went to Clackamas. What level is not, we can't guarantee what that would be. The other opportunity is continued community involvement. Just because we contract doesn't mean that there's not a community bond with the fire station. That is, that is a core value of every fire department, and they will continue to interact with the community. The other opportunity is employees have a greater promotional opportunity and a better career path in an organization that has a lot more opportunities of different types of things that we cannot offer. There are weaknesses. The dependency on levy funding is one. The initial fear of losing your community fire department. Those are the things that can be discussed, and there are solutions. Another threat would be ending the contract or returning the services to Gladstone. That is a possibility, and it just takes an amount of funding that would probably have to be creatively you have to come up with a good plan to reorganize the fire department from scratch. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Chief Brown and Director Seering to discuss contracting and what that would involve and maybe some experiences they've had with other districts and cities and entities that they've collaborated with over the last couple decades. Chief?
Awesome. Thank you so much, Council and City Administrator Betts and Chief Huffman. Really appreciate the opportunity to be here. I'm gonna turn some time over to Director Seering to start, if that's okay, just to give us a little bit of history and perspective from Director Seering.
Thank you, Chief. Am I coming across okay? Greetings, Mayor, Counselor, Chief Huffman, city staff, and citizens. My name's Jim Seering, and I'm a director with Clackamas Fire District One. I've been affiliated with Clackamas for thirty-seven years. They call me the historian. I worked thirty years on the line from firefighter to deputy chief. And I've been, I retired, and then I've been a director for seven years. So thank you for the opportunity to be part of this discussion tonight. I'll have to say, I really enjoyed reading through your annual two thousand and twenty-one report. It talked a lot about Gladstone's history and the changes that you've gone through to the present. And I want to stress how important that is because that's who Clackamas is. It's exactly how we have evolved too. Reading through it brought back some memories in regards to the history. I started at Clackamas District Seventy-One, which was next to Gladstone on Eighty-Second Drive to your northeast. I knew Wayne, the longtime Gladstone Fire Marshal for many years. I was good friends with Gladstone Volunteer Fire Chief Charlie Ames. I worked with many of your volunteer and career personnel over the years. And we always worked hard to have a great relationship with Gladstone. So as you may or may not know, Clackamas One is what used to be ten different fire departments that, just like Gladstone, over the years, due to various evolutions and changes, decided to partner with each other. Four of those were the other four cities in North Clackamas, Happy Valley, Oregon City, Johnson City, and Milwaukee. Those four cities also became part of Clackamas. So Gladstone used to have four departments on four sides of you. Oak Lodge Fire District to your north, Clackamas Seventy-One Fire District was to your northeast. District Fifty-four was to your east, and then south was, of course, the city of Oregon City Fire Department. So four communities that also had extremely proud histories but realized that the benefits of partnering and sharing resulted in, number one, more than anything, the ability to staff more, two, sustainability into the future. And in the case of some of the And in the case of some of the agencies that are part of Clackamas now, including Boring Fire District, Beaver Creek, Clarks. The volunteer retention and recruitment became a real struggle for them. It's a national problem everywhere as society and and demands and requirements for volunteers have changed. So as the community partnerships grew and departments contracted with each other and later merged or annexed. There were always three things that I noticed that were always important and, and are what we are today. Number one, community identity. All community fire stations, all twenty-one of them in Clackamas are labeled and titled today uh, according to their community identification. It's the Boring Community Fire Station, the Beaver Creek Community Fire Station, the Oak Grove Community Fire Station. That's always been important to those communities that they have that and keep that identity with their community fire station. And it is a part of who we are today. Number two, community events. Participation in parades, tours, summer music festivals, egg hunts, the Operation Santa program that's district-wide uh, with the parades every December, on and on. We participate and are always there for the community, no matter what community you're in. Especially the, the individual community fire stations. And then third, to retain our history, that the several stations, including the Boring Station, Milwaukee, Oregon City have walls of history, photographs and history of, of the uh, those agencies prior and everything that their communities went through. History is important. That it be kept for generations into the future. So as a director, I could assure and pledge to you that if we did enter into a partnership with Gladstone, those items would be just as important to us as they are now. Um, as I read through the packet and learned a little more about the situation that, that Gladstone is, is facing now, I think it's important to remember your history. The chief mentioned that. And evolving into something new and partnering with your neighboring communities is really how I've always looked at it being through this ten times. Uh, it's just a new chapter of the history and it can be just as exciting. So I understand that, that Gladstone uh, maybe requesting a potential contract from Clackamas, just like other communities have. And if that's the case, then what I would pledge to you as the director is your community identity and history would be retained. Sounds like we would be guaranteeing staffing twenty-four seven with the three-person company, nevertheless. Sounds like we would be guaranteeing paramedic coverage twenty-four seven, nevertheless, you'd become part of the Clackamas County ALS system. Uh, really importantly, the chief mentioned that earlier. We would ensure an effective response force and that's important because what that means is all those communities around you, I noticed in the packet it had a map showing all the fire stations around you. Uh, Oak Lodge, Oregon City, Clackamas, they all have trucks, engines, heavy rescues, apparatus that would be coming from further away in some cases. And we would ensure coverage on every one of your incidents. So in that regional response model, you in essence are part of us. No questions asked, whatever's needed. We're all one and one in the same. Uh, Battalion Chief Coverage twenty-four seven would be uh, covered. You all know you have not one river, but two rivers in Gladstone. So we have the rescue boat, water rescue coverage. That's all becomes part of the Gladstone, had a great history of dive rescue uh, for many, many years that they always provided. As part of the regional service and then the other services, prevention, fleet, wellness, training. Really everything that it takes to become a full-service modern agency that all the agencies together partner to make what we are today. And then we have our volunteer program. Our program, like many, across the country has evolved to a duty shift-based suppression volunteer program. We have many different types of support volunteer programs. We have some all volunteer stations and we use the accountable plan, uh, which is the recognized best practices for volunteer departments. So all of that, uh, you would be part of us just like we are. So in my opinion, uh, if a contract for service were to be requested, that I feel we have support from the Clackamas Board. And the reason why, and it's extremely important to note that this partnership doesn't benefit just Gladstone, it benefits our communities too. Those communities all around you, as you all know. Going up McLaughlin, that engine from Gladstone can get there quicker than our Oak Lodge engine going up Eighty-Second Drive. That Gladstone engine can get there quicker than Clackamas engine, vice versa in Oregon City. So all those communities around you that are part of us benefit reciprocally. Uh, as that fully-staffed engine, including paramedics in Gladstone helps all of our communities. So to me, it's a true example of the win-win. And it's really, it's always made sense. It's just perhaps never needed to, to happen or came up until now. But uh, thank you for your time and your partnership and look forward to uh, working with you in any way that we can. So, thank you.
Awesome, Director Searing. Thank you so much. Uh, you, uh, I don't, I don't know how I can top the, the historian and the information that he, uh, that he just threw out. Uh, but it's, it's, uh, I appreciate that. Chief Huffman, I'll dive into a few things. And if there's anything uh, that you uh, would like me to elaborate on, please, uh, please feel free to, to jump in. I think it's important for us to focus a little bit on the, the service that Clackamas Fire uh, provides. Uh, Director Searing spoke to it. But we offer, it should something happen with, with Gladstone, twenty-four seven. Uh, three-person engine company, paramedic with a paramedic on there. That is, that is a guarantee. That is what is on every single one of our apparatus. Um, and, and that is what, uh, that is the baseline for us as an organization. Um, uh, you know, Dr. Houston spoke to medical calls and, and, and uh, one of the things that, that, that we respond, we have for, for medical calls is obviously the paramedic on the fire engine. But if it's for the more critical uh, medical calls that we face, we always dispatch a, a couple engines to respond. So there's oftentimes, if it's a cardiac arrest. If it's um, a, a, a serious call in nature, uh, you'll get two fire engines um, with, with two paramedics on there, um, and six people, just depending on the nature of the call. Um, we talk about effective response force and I really want to break down what that is. Um, just, just a little bit, let, a, a, a lower level uh, in the weeds a little bit here, but, but really kind of just to show you what Clackamas Fire does as far as our effective response force. We we exceed NFPA seventeen-twenty, um, in, in their recommendations for, for fires uh, as well as commercial fires. Uh, we, we, for a house fire, for an example, we threw off four engines with minimum staffing of three-person uh, on, on each engine. One ladder truck, uh, one heavy rescue, uh, each of those have four each on there. Um, one transport medic, uh, and two BCS. With a commercial fire, we add a second truck, second ladder company with four people on there. So if you really look, break that down, uh, within that effective response force in that seventeen-twenty time standard. Uh, we have a minimum of, of twenty-four people on scene for residential structure. And for commercial fires, we have twenty-eight. Those, those services would all be, uh, what Gladstone Fire would receive. You know, it's, I, it's, it's important for me and for us and for Rick to, to help you understand truly what the fire service is about here. And it's, it doesn't matter if it's Gladstone or Clackamas Fire. This is, this is kind of the mantra uh, and the, and the focus that we have i- in this level of service. And, and really our purpose, uh, our existence is to save lives and mitigate emergencies while bringing calm to, calm to the chaos that, that, that uh, our citizens are facing. Uh, we, we constantly strive to bring value to our communities. We serve and, and, and ultimately it's, the focus is to bring uh, to make people's lives better for, for being a part of it. We strive uh, to be a well-trained team, uh, really in anything that we do. Uh, we're, we're a group of empathetic professionals. And, and we constantly believe in improving and empowering our people to best serve those that we've sworn an oath to protect. There's a couple of commitment things that we, that we, that we do in the fire service and, and the Gladstone Fire does and the Clackamas Fire does. And we, we commit to saving lives and protecting homes and structure. We, we commit to actively locating and occupying all searchable spaces within a structure fire. Uh, we commit to being innovative industry leaders in an all-hazard service delivery. And, and when we talk about all-hazard service delivery, we offer technical rescue of all sorts. Uh, not only, uh, like Director Searing spoke to as far as um, uh, water rescue, but we do USAR, urban search and rescue, confined space, trench rescue, vehicle machinery, uh, rope rescue. Um, we have two uh, medic transporting uh, ALS ambulances that are in a subcontract with AMR, um, from Clackamas Fire with Clackamas Fire Personnel on there. And um, we, we just, uh, really our focus is to provide that level of service to the citizens that, that we sworn an oath to protect and, and really doing this at a, at a regional level as well. Uh, we know that as a team you can do, uh, you can do, as an individual you can do okay things and as a team you can do great things. And so really that's kind of the focus that, uh, that we have. As far as contract uh, conversation and follow-up. Um, uh, Rick, is there anything specific, uh, more so that, that uh, Director Searing has spoke to or that I've spoke to tonight that, that you would like us to, to hit on? Uh, length of contract, anything of that nature? Or is that, uh, is that in the all-in-the-board packet and, and, and you feel that's been touched already?
Chief, I think we're okay at this moment. I'm sure the council will have uh, clarifying questions if needed. It, it was all included in the packet. Um, I think you both have really given a, a really good summary of, of uh, what your agency is and and Director Searing, you know, what, what the past has been and and a conglomeration of all departments that are now partnered together. Did you have any other remarks, Chief?
No, I just, uh, I, I just appreciate the opportunity and the collaboration that we've had with Gladstone Fire. And appreciate the opportunity to be able to sit in front of you today. So, thank you so much.
Thank you both. I think I'd like to uh, turn it back over to uh, the City Administrator with these final comments. Uh, as we approach public comment and questions by the council, I put this picture up here about the wildfire smoke we had in September twenty-twenty. I think unfortunately, we, we had that event, the firestorm in September. And what that did is, I think it gives a little clarity and an example with Chief was just talking about. Is there was a a situation that no one fire department could handle. Uh, it took resources from all over the state to take care of Clackamas County. Uh, and I believe we even got some out-of-state uh, companies in from California. But I think I'd like to put that in more perspective. This, this was a very impactful event for everybody in the region. You know, this coming into Gladstone, we almost evacuated the whole city. I mean, who would have thought of that? Uh, but that's the extreme example of, of partnerships and collaboration. Uh, I'd like to take it back to a day, a daily operation. On the freeway here, the same picture, we may have a car accident. And Gladstone may or may not be the easiest apparatus to get that, to that accident. So what we do is we have a collaborative collaboration in response to where Clackamas, uh, American Medical Response and Gladstone will all respond to the freeway from different directions so we can access it and we can work together under the same protocols to, to help people. That, that's a really good example of the, the daily thing that happens, whether it's like the chief says CPR or a car accident, water rescue, all the way to the whole county's on fire. And I can tell you from personal experience during that, those events that we had large fires on our borders, uh, on Eighty-Second Avenue in New Oregon City. And I believe because of the, the Tuolton Valley, Portland Fire, uh, Gladstone and Clackamas were all on Eighty-Second Avenue trying to stop those fire embers from blowing into our city. And they were successful in that. I, I can tell you that's, that we were really threatened during that fire. The city was saved by mutual partnership with these fire agencies. And I think that's the ultimate example, whether it's an active shooter in one of our schools or a state, statewide fire, we have to work together. And I understand that that's a concept that people don't think about every day. When it happens, you become very emotional, frightened, concerned, angry, and those are all respected emotions. But from our point of view, we collaborate so we can end those situations. And I, I just wanted to end that with that situation, uh, because it's extreme. But also because what happened last week was a step in the next direction. We happen to have one volunteer we recruited last year that passed all their entrance, entrance requirements. In Clackamas District One, happened to be putting on a volunteer fire academy. And we were able to get our person in it a little bit late, but they started in the academy. That person graduated with honors last week with Chief, uh, Brown and myself there and along with Sandy Fire Chief. It was the first uh, cooperative multi-agency volunteer academy that has been held. And I can tell you, it was one of the most uh, fulfilling moments, I think, for all of us there to have that graduated academy. And that firefighter will be getting additional training as soon as we get him on the line here. So I just wanted to end with that and turn it back over to you, uh, City Administrator.
Thank you, Fire Chief Huffman. Thank you to all our guests that we've had tonight. We do have some people that have signed up to speak. And so Counselor Tracy, I think what we'll do is have the city recorder call them in the order that we received their request and each person will have three minutes to provide comment. After those five that we have signed up, if there are others from the audience, they can raise their hand and we'll call on them as well.
Yeah, thank you, City Administrator. That's, I, I think that's probably the best way to proceed.
Our first will be Pat, Pat McMahon.
Did we take the presentation down?
Pat, you should be able to unmute yourself. Well, we'll come back to Mr. McMahon. Next will be Tom Mercero. Mr. Mercero, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Thank you, I just did. Mayor and counselors, I, Tom Mercero, would like to make a comment about an experience I had with the Gladstone Fire Department. In two thousand, I had a diabetic seizure and cardiac arrest, of which my heart stopped. My wife that has since passed, called in an emergency to the Gladstone Fire Department. On arrival, a volunteer paramedic crew with bike front to lead used a defibrillator to bring me back to life. I made a request to the city for you make, to me, to make a payback to the fire department, saving my life. On review of my resume, the city council recommended that I be appointed to the planning commission that started in two thousand and seven. In two thousand and eleven, I was appointed by the ca- city council to be a counselor. For several years, I was selected to be a liaison to the fire department. In closing, I recommend the use of the on-call Gladstone Fire Department personnel to be used now and in the future. Thank you for listening.
Can we call the next person in line, please?
We're gonna try Mr. McMahon again. Pat, are you able to unmute yourself? Okay, our next will be Citizen Tammy Stempel.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. First, I want to be clear that I'm speaking as a citizen. After reading through the documents, having numerous citizen phone calls and meetings, the overwhelming conclusion I heard is that we have failed. We have failed our firefighters, we have failed our fire department, and we have failed our citizens. We made the choice to fund everything else except our fire department. The fire department that responds to save people's lives and property, putting their own safety at risk every day. The fire department that responded without hesitation to two years of COVID exposures, putting themselves and their families at risk. The fire department that has done all of this while under attack and without the support from those that create our city's budget. Every day wondering if they will have a job tomorrow to do what they love. And what they love is helping our citizens when they are in their worst moments. What is crystal clear is that this community loves our fire department and that they aren't just a budget line item. It is an incredible, it is incredible people that risk everything to help you. Apparatus operator Zach Buchanan, Lieutenant John Serta, probationary firefighter Connor Denny, probationary firefighter Cole Dunn, firefighter Vlad Gip, Chief Rick Huffman, engineer Eric Leibner, probationary firefighter Jeremy Nelson, Captain Richard Newton, firefighter Jacob Sale, Lieutenant Barry Schaefer, AO Charlie Stay, Captain Kirk Stempel, firefighter Jerry Sturzeneger, engineer Isaac Goman, battalion chief Ty Roman, and firefighter Cody Wyatt. They have names, they have families, they have lives they risk for you every day they are on shift. We have failed them and we should be ashamed of ourselves. We should not in good conscience support any capital project, equipment purchase, raise or bonus when we are unable and unwilling to fully fund our fire department. There was an opportunity to roll back some of the extravagances we have approved recently, we should. Everything, every, everything we spend money on right now is an extravagance if we cannot fund a critical department that our city depends on. And shame on anyone that feels that we should. There's not one person I've spoken to or met with that believes otherwise. Every single one of our firefighters is important, and I mean every single one. The proposal from Clackamas Fire will basically end our paid-on-call program. And that is something we cannot and should not support. Citizens will campaign as hard as they can to ensure that those employees are protected and valued. They matter to our citizens and our citizens are ultimately the ones that drive our decisions. And they will not stand for this. So the overwhelming questions and concerns I've heard are, who creates the budget and why was the fire department forgotten when our other departments have been given extremely healthy budgets? Why is there clear preference for police services number one and public work second? Citizens feel that this needs to be answered. Why did we, the community, not get wind of this until drastic measures are needed? And it's time for an oversight committee of some sort because some of the citizens have lost faith in the ability of our staff, budget and audit to create a budget that truly supports the needs of our city. Thank you.
We're going to try one more time, Mr. McMahon.
I tried to unmute, did it work?
You're unmuted.
Holy crap, I'm not even going to swear. Mayor, councilors and city staff, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Pat McMahon, 280 West Clarenden. When I heard from Chief Huffman that he had city council approval to talk with Clackamas County Fire District One about a possible merger or contract for services, I was disappointed. But tonight we are not talking about my hurt feelings. We are here talking about what is best for all the citizens of Gladstone. There are at least 200 families who for over the last 90 years have been a part of the Gladstone Volunteer Fire Department. Smiths, Ames, Monties, Veginis, Funks, Hopperstats, Herders, Houks, Rothees, Ripley's, Philows, Tracy's, McMahon's, Olson's, Bros and many more. In days of yore, we waited for the air raid siren or our pagers to go off and we raced down to the fire station. First three to four firefighters always got to go, but this can make it up to four minutes from when the call comes in to when the fire engine is leaving the station. This is unacceptable. When a full-time fire crew is at the station, this leaving the station time can be cut down to no more than one and a half minutes. This saves two and a half to three minutes of vital time, making the fire engine's arrival at your emergency two and a half to three minutes faster. As someone who has recently watched their neighbor's workshop five feet from the side of my house aggressively burning at 4:30 in the morning, I was never as happy as when I saw the fire engines from Oregon City and Oak Lodge pulling up out front. The Gladstone fire engine was on a medical call when this fire was called in and they were disappointed to have missed out on the fun. Spock said, "Logic clearly dictates that the needs of the many outweigh the wants of the few." And he said, "Change is the essential process of all existence." What do I think the city should do? I would have the city ask for a longer contract up to 15 years with Clackamas County Fire District One. I would have proper signage, which sounds like the director and the fire chief already talked about in front of the current station saying something like for over 90 years proudly serving the citizens of Gladstone. Lastly, I would ask that the city enter into an agreement with Clackamas County Fire District One to provide fire services for the citizens of Gladstone. Thank you for the time and thank you for keep coming back to me. Technology, I hate it.
Next will be Steve Johnson.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, yes.
All right. When our library was outsourced to Clackamas County, no other options were seriously considered, including building it ourselves. This was true even though the city had a large surplus in the neighborhood of $2.5 million and a credit limit of approximately $48 million. Instead, Gladstone signed a horrid take-it-or-leave-it contract with Clackamas County with terms that obviously weren't going to benefit the city. That was years ago. A new library still hasn't been built in Gladstone. And as of last week, Clackamas County appears to be preparing to ask the city to pay more money to build our library. After more than 20 years of letting Clackamas County meddle in our library, we still don't have a new one or appear to be getting one anytime soon. When will we learn? Apparently not when it comes to our fire department. Our fire department has been slowly allowed to fail with incompetent management and the stench of corruption working in a corrosive combination. Our fire department has spent well over $1 million on a new fire truck it doesn't need, a bunkhouse it will probably never use, and an unnecessary, pretentious and expensive private office for the fire chief. All while not being able to reliably provide the basic fire and rescue services that it was tasked with. Recommendations. Number one, the fire chief has provided long written documents full of excuses as to why he can't properly provide the fire and rescue services that he was hired to provide. He has failed us. His employment should be terminated immediately before he causes more damage. Two, Mayor Tammy Stempel should be required to decide whether she wants to continue as mayor or make money from the city through her husband's employment at the fire department. The current fire chief knows that as long as the mayor's husband works for him, he has carte blanche to do whatever he wants at the fire department. Look how well that has worked out. The quickest way for this corruption to end would be with Tammy Stempel's resignation. Three, Sandy Estacada, Canby and Lake Oswego all successfully operate their own fire departments. Find out why and duplicate it in Gladstone. Doesn't seem to be that hard. Allowing Gladstone to be absorbed into Fire District One means that we will pay more for fire and rescue services and have almost no control over where those services come from or their reliability. Giving up and going with a first easy answer hasn't worked well for our library. It won't for our fire department either. Thank you.
Next is Natalie Smith.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful. Good evening, city councilors. I've lived in the community of Gladstone, Oregon for over 20 years. I've been listening to everyone speak. I have been witness to several, more than three that I can think of, in, in my little block of where in the last 20 years, the Gladstone Volunteer Fire Department saved someone who had a heart attack and passed away right across the street. They brought him back. There was a fire, a three alarm fire right down at the end of my block. I was on the phone with 911 and before I was even finished with the call, Gladstone Fire Department was there. I'm hearing that we've had failures with performance or we're not fast enough. But I do know this. As a taxpaying citizen, I want to retain our very independent Gladstone Fire Department that has been serving our community for decades. I think it's vitally important that we continue with looking at other alternatives. Maybe getting a group of citizens together and finding better ways to fund our fire department and ramp up our volunteer paid-on-call volunteer services. But I certainly hope that we retain our, you know, if they're doing it in other communities, being able to retain small fire departments, I want to see us do it and reinvest in our fire department, find a way within the budget. I know it means a higher levy the next time it's due, but I would rather pay that than pay possibly much higher amounts later down the road by outsourcing our fire department. I don't want to lose our assets. I read the, I read the proposal. I don't feel that it benefits our city. And most importantly, I don't think it benefits our citizens. I appreciate everyone's time to look into everything. And I do think it's important that our compensation of our firefighters is equal to our police force. That hasn't been the case this last year. And that's disturbing because every time there's needed, there's been a need, whether it's a fire or an elder falling down or hurting or someone with a critical medical condition, I've seen our Gladstone Fire Department arrive and take care of the person. I also think there's a possibility to create a consortium where we can work with other small fire departments to share resources in the way of on-call paid volunteers. I, I don't want to be beholden to any other fire district. I pay property taxes for the city of Gladstone. I want to keep my services here. Let's reinvest, restructure and keep our fire department. Thank you very much for your time. Good evening.
I do have a couple that have their hands up. So I will call those and please note that your comments are limited to three minutes. The first is Harvey Barnes.
Hello?
Hello, we can hear you and see you.
Well, well, good evening. My name is Harvey Barnes. I've lived in Gladstone six years now. And forgive me in advance for not being caustic tonight. I, I do want to say though, that I listened with a great deal of interest to the fire chief. I've known George Dunkle for a long time, so I trust his, his abilities as well. And we, we just need to cut down to, to facts here. If you get a map out and look around, every city and community and county and part of the county around us is Clackamas Fire District One. It doesn't make any sense to me to, to, to continue to try to fund our own fire department when, when our very own chief will, which I'm guessing is going to lose his job, is telling us that that's just not feasible. Even if you can hire more employees today, it sounds to me, I, I believe I heard him correctly, that they're already going to lose more employees in the near future. So again, I know it's a tough pill to swallow. Not everyone's going to like it. But what I think we really need to do is move on a contract, or if not annex into contract with Fire District One and, and provide some, some 24 hours, seven day a week, if that's what you want to call it. Fire and EMS service to Gladstone. Now, keep in mind that Gladstone, as you've heard this evening, is but not in this situation by itself. Every, probably every community around the state, down on the coast, up in the Cascades, central Oregon, it's very, very expensive to run an EMS system. You know, we just need to, 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 to join a bigger group, have more resources available. That's my opinion. Thank you all very much for listening.
The next will be Mark, and I don't have a last name, but you should be able to talk. Mark, you should be able to unmute yourself. Okay, we'll go on to the next. We'll come back to Mark. The next is Charlie. Charlie, you, you can unmute yourself? I think you were just unmuted. You can unmute again.
All right, here we go. My name is Charlie Stay. I'm the president of the Gladstone Fire Department Members Association. I'm speaking on behalf of the members of the association. I'd like to say a few things about the firefighters at Gladstone right now. The firefighters are not volunteers. They're paid for every hour they're there. If Gladstone goes to Clackamas, those highly skilled men will be let go or possibly made volunteers. Being a Clackamas volunteer is not like being Gladstone where you get to run calls. They're more used as support staff for the career guys. Gladstone firefighters are the main resources for our city. And they go to the emergencies independently unless it's a larger emergency where more manpower is needed. Gladstone ran more than 1,700 calls last year. Our firefighters have a lot of experience. Many of the Gladstone guys are worried about losing this place that they have put many years in. Since COVID started, Gladstone Fire has been run as a full-time department with people on shift 24 hours a day and with a fully staffed engine. These guys right now are on a 24, 48 hour schedule, just like career stations around us. I'm asking that you don't get rid of our firefighters and that you keep Gladstone Fire Department the way it is running now. I have just one question that has not been addressed. What's going to happen to the Gladstone firefighters? Thank you.
Mark, are you able to unmute yourself? We'll go on to the next. That is Randy Hopperstad. Randy, can you unmute yourself? There you go. Thank you. Randy? Randy, are you able to unmute yourself?
About now.
There we go. We can hear you. Thank you.
Okay. Hi, everyone. Hey, I'd just like to say that I think it's vitally important that the city maintains a, an hold on all the that the city maintains a, an hold on all the equipment that we own and the station and everything. I've seen it happen before where some of these mergers have ended up with the department wanting to go home alone and not having any equipment to do it with. So whatever we do, we need to maintain ownership of our equipment, and some of you already know that we need to do that. So please keep Gladstone equipment Gladstone and Gladstone firefighters in Gladstone. Thank you.
The next is Dan. I don't have a last name. Dan, are you able to unmute yourself? Dan, are you there? How about Mark? Mark, can you unmute yourself? Unfortunately, I can't get either one unmuted. And that was the last of the two that had their hands up.
Tammy, to unmute on a phone, is it star nine?
I believe that's correct.
So, but let's have Mark and Dan try to hit star nine on their cellphone.
It looks like Mark is unmuted. Mark, are you able to speak? Mark, are you able to?
Just to clarify, administrative best, it's star six to unmute.
Star six? So we'll ask Mark and Dan to hit star six and see if that works.
I do have one more that just raised their hand. I show Gabe. Oh, Mark, are you there? Okay, we will try to bring on Gabe. Gabe, are you able to?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, thank you. My name is Gabe Stalker. I lived in Gladstone for 23 years. I went to Gladstone schools from kindergarten, and I graduated in 12th grade there. All my family went to Gladstone schools, kindergarten through 12th grade. So I have a long history with the city of Gladstone and the community there. The number one mission of the fire department is to serve the citizens that are paying taxes and live in the surrounding areas that the fire department's serving. Right now, right this second, the community members of Gladstone Fire are not getting what they deserve. I also volunteered with Gladstone Fire Department for several years. I know the struggles of the fire department, and I know from firsthand experience that the on-call model does not work. Gladstone Fire Department runs in a tremendous amount of calls, and right now, they cannot keep up. That fire station is not staffed appropriately, and the citizens are not getting what they deserve. The citizens deserved a, deserve a fully-staffed, functioning fire station and a fire engine to show up 24/7, 365. And as of right now, they're not getting a fully-staffed paramedic ALS fire engine. I truly believe a contract for services with Clackamas Fire District Number One would give the community members the highest level of care that they deserve. Thank you.
Mark, are you able to speak? Dan, you should also be able to speak. Are you able to speak?
Thank you, Tammy. I think at this point, Councilor Tracy, I will hand it back over to you. The next item on the agenda really is just to have follow-up if there's any city council discussion, the next steps. There's no decision that's being made tonight. Tonight was really to, again, review the options that we're considering and to hear feedback from the public on this. This item will be on the March 8 City Council agenda. At that time, we will be talking to the city council about coming to a consensus on what you would like to do. But if there's any discussion that the elected officials would like to have tonight, this would be the time to go ahead and ask questions of the presenters that are here or any follow-up for staff. That would be very helpful.
Okay, thank you, City Administrator Betts. So I think I'll refer to the council. What we'll do is just basically go, I think, councillor to councillor with questions. I'll ask the council now, though, do you, do we have a lot of questions? Is this something that we're going to, okay, so we're going to get into a deeper discussion tonight about this. A lot more information was kind of availed with some of the comments. And so I think we have a number of different conversations to have, quite frankly. Least of which is not how different folks are positioning themselves, not only politically, but as citizens and what have you across the board here. I, I don't think I've ever experienced this in, in either in observation or in participation. So I'll go ahead and start with Councilor Alexander. I think we'll just run through the list and Greg, just, you know, questions, comments, or what have you, and then we'll go through just typically like we do any discussion.
All right, I'll try to be as quick as possible. First, I just want to say I've lived here 35-plus years also, and Randy and, and a crew of volunteer firefighters right down the street from me at my brother's house saved my sister-in-law's life when she was having a seizure. So, and I watched them do a number of other great things. So I do like the on-call volunteers. Also, I just want, are we going to be spending over a million dollars on this? Is it Jackie, I guess I'd ask? I can't hear you.
Well, first of all, you're not making any decisions tonight, but I'm not sure when you are referencing a million dollars what you're referring.
I just, I just meant if, if it's going to cost the city over a million dollars. Because wouldn't we, wouldn't that have to go to the voters? And that's just what I'm trying to, some people ask me about that. If it's going to cost us more than that, the voter should get its say. So that's what I'm trying to clarify.
Oh, the contract for services, the amount that's in your packet, it is, I believe, two point. I'd have to find that. I could have.
Two point one five.
Yeah, the city attorney can weigh in, Chad, to talk about whether or not it would require a vote of the citizens.
Good evening, everybody. Yeah, chat tickets from the city attorney's office. First, let me apologize. I'm keeping my camera off because I'm out of town and at a hotel. So my Wi-Fi is not all that great. It keeps going in and out. I'll look at the city charter and get back to you. I don't, I know there are provisions in the city charter for purchasing of real property, and since we're not doing any of that, I don't, that provision won't apply here, but I'll look to see if there's any other provisions of the charter that might apply here and get back to you. I just don't know if Tom I had, but let me take a quick look while you continue your conversation. I'll let you know.
Okay, and the next thing would be, can, can Nick or Jim or anybody speak to why the contract didn't get renewed or work with Estacada? I don't know. Can, can you or?
Yeah, I can answer any questions. It's, it's based on, on paradigm or, or opinion. The simple fact is that the voters voted to not continue service.
Okay.
And so what we, what we had established, Councilman Alexander, was a one-year contract for service then to a merge vote, and they voted no for the merge, which then the contract for service was void at that point. And so the, at, at the Board of Directors meeting, they had two options. One was to continue a contract for service or to start their fire department again, and they, and they voted to start their own fire department again. So Clackamas Fire stayed, helped them along that process until they were up on their feet to be able to start their, their own fire department again, and then, and then effective July 1, we pulled out, they pulled in. That was the, that was, that's really how it went down. Director Seren, anything to add with that?
The Estacada contract for service was very interesting. I think we, what we learned as a regional service provider from that is, is the Estacada directors chose to push a vote too soon. We started a contract for service on July 1, and then there was an election in November. Months afterwards, Clackamas didn't have the time or the opportunity, and it was COVID as well, to, to prove that they could provide services to the citizens of Estacada. Well, then, low and behold, the wildfires happened, and Estacada was ground zero. And the federal government that came in, you, you all saw it on the news, made the decision for the tactical withdrawal, and then forces pulled back, and it kind of turned into a real political op-ed, but you know, we just stood back, and in the end, the, that election was months, it was two months after the wildfires, and those citizens had, what they were voting on was permanent four-person staffing or go back to Estacada. And 60% of them, so a small population, voted to go back. So it's a good example that even when you enter into a contract for service, local jurisdictions always have the ability to go back if it doesn't work out for whatever reason. And in that case, there, there probably never should have been an election so quick. Normally, other, all of these 10 agencies, the communities that voted, all of them voted to partner with each other, generally, these contracts for services, from what our experience is, five years is a really good number. That's average, three to five years, because it gives the jurisdiction that's providing a service the ability to show the community that they mean what they mean and to provide the service. Those are the ones that have worked real well. But in that case, all kinds of things went wrong with it, and that's, you know, but in the end, I, hey, the will of the people, the people voted to do it on their own, and I'll have to give them credit. Estacada, right now, is providing that on their own. You know, we, we as directors, I was just kind of glanced, and we get charts that look like this, and you see all these graphs. This shows numbers of how many times we go to a department versus how many times they come to us. That's that. I think the chief mentioned that, that in today's world, you know, mutual aid means you, we go there once and you come help us once, and, and that's really the cost neutral. But Estacada is doing it on their own. I'll have to give them a lot of credit. They've been, been able to go to the hills and do recruiting, and whatever they're doing seems to be working. What's Gladstone doing? I guess that, that's kind of the question that got to this point. But what I do see on these numbers, and I think it's worth mentioning, that these numbers show that already, we've really already evolved with Gladstone to what you would call a regional partner. We're coming into Gladstone about a three-to-one ratio. We're coming in there three times more than Gladstone's helping us. In some months, Gladstone sends zero, and we send 20 to 25 units and calls. So those are the types of things that, that I see sometimes at our meetings, our public and our directors say, well, well, this isn't cost neutral. And what you're seeing nowadays, Chief Dunkle sees what's going on all around the state is cost recovery is the big word. Is it fair for one community to, to spend tens of millions of dollars for all this equipment, people, and then another community to be able to use it for nothing? You know, it's kind of, we're in kind of a cost recovery, trying to help, you know, balance things out. And so that's just one thing I thought was worth mentioning, that some people may not really realize, we've kind of, we're already kind of doing it. And, but yet now, you know, we're actually talking about it. So, but that was a long-winded answer, but thank you for the question.
That's all right. Thank you. The other, the other one I, I had was a, this, I think something you said, Chief Huffman, was you'd have to have a supervisor and a captain on duty. Now, wouldn't it cut down costs if you could have the supervisor or slash captain? And they went on the call, actually. I mean, what, what does a supervisor do? He's there, and then you got to have a captain and two firefighters. You know what I mean? Isn't there any way to cut down there? Why is there got to be a supervisor or captain? I mean?
Maybe I misspoke, counselor. The, the captain is the supervisor.
Oh, that's okay. You said that a supervisor.
Goes go on all the incidents.
Okay, that was it. And, yeah, I like the hybrid. I liked what citizen, you know, Natalie Smith said, and, well, you know, too, also, Nick and Jim, I've been in another negotiation with you guys also, where we did the IGA, and that worked out, it's working out good. So I like that. But, um, also, I just, I guess, it, it says right here, it says it in the, in the book, and, and everything we get, it says contracting services. So services, that's, I guess, where people get confused, because if you're contracting just services from you guys, why would you need, you know, the fire engine and all that? I mean, you could, you could use that. That would be part of us, like, working with you. But why would you have to take it over? Why would it become yours? You know what I mean?
Yeah, the, the contract for services is everything that Clackamas Fire has to offer. Health and wellness, peer support, safety officer, fire prevention. We, we offer a lot of services that, that a normal fire department doesn't offer, just in, in basically just based on the size of, of organization we are. A big focus for us is the mental health and well-being of our people. And so we pride ourselves in, in, in our health, health and wellness program. We offer community medicine. That's, that's something that, that a lot of, of agencies just simply can't afford. And Amy Jo Cook is a community paramedic, goes out to our vulnerable and, and houseless population, and also those repetitive calls that, that are calling 911 for emergencies that, that don't really, for calls for service that aren't really of emergent nature, and getting them to the right resources is, is crucial. And so we've, we've dedicated ourselves into helping our community. So when it says services, that's, that's really what it is. It's more than just fire and fire response. We do EMS response. We do everything, all hazards, technical rescue, you name it, we do it. So it's not just service. It's not just the fire service. It's fire services.
All right. I guess I just wondered why you would need, why you would need our engine. I mean, I mean, it's going to be here anyway and be on calls. Why would you guys, I think it says here, what'd you guys say, Clackamas Fire want to acquire the frontline engine?
Yeah. So for us, that was a way of making this equitable. Because the, the, the direction from the council, from my understanding, was a, a cost neutral. You didn't want to spend any more money than, than what you and, and your frontline fire engine, the capital asset, really made that to where that was an equitable based on what we currently charge our citizens is, is $240,000. And that balance of, of that fire engine is, is really what that, that delta is for us to be able to make that equitable.
So the contract didn't work. You guys would keep our, we'd have to buy a new engine. You'd keep that or?
No, that's not. Yeah, that's, that's in, within the contract. First thing you seem to make, these are concepts, right? There has been no contract.
Okay, this is just.
Yeah, this, this is question and answer. What you see in your packet is an email back and forth between Gladstone Fire and Clackamas Fire, asking these questions and wanting answers back. The city, and, and Jackie, if you just please, because I, I want, I want to make sure I'm not misspoken here. The city's attorney, should the council want to move forward, would be drumming up a contract.
That's correct. These are all concepts, and we wanted to be crystal transparent, which is why we put in the Q and A exactly. exactly how we had it in an email exchange with Clackamas Fire.
Exactly.
Beautiful, beautiful. So my last question, thank you, Nick. My last question then would be, uh, who who is negotiating on the behalf of Gladstone? Who who's at the table for us, for Gladstone?
That would be myself, the city attorney Chad Jacobs, our finance consultant Kathy Brucker, and our fire chief Rick Huffman.
And those, those are the only four that are in this negotiation or?
Correct.
All right. Uh, so you have Chad, Kathy, you and Rick. Okay, that's it for me. Thank you.
Counselor Alexander, before you move on, just to get back to your question, I took a look through the charter, and I don't see anything in the charter that would require a vote to enter into this IGA.
Okay, thank you, Chad.
Thank you, Counselor Alexander. I think next, uh, Counselor Ripley, are you still on?
Yes. Um, I really don't have a lot of questions since I was down there for twenty-eight years. I have a lot of disagreements. I think if we're going to be talking numbers, if we can't provide the data to prove those numbers, then we kind of need to leave that data out. Um, twenty-eight years, I'm a minute from the station, and I couldn't make the engine quite a few times as fast as it was getting out the door. One of the callers was actually one of the people who would be on the engine, and I'd see the back end of it if I would seen that. Because it was out the door quite a bit. If we underestimate our volunteers, we're not going to get anywhere. Um, there's, there's several issues with past and present that um, if we don't keep educating ourselves, we're going to get in trouble. There's a, there's a difference between leadership of management. And I won't go into that. All I'll say is you should Google leadership management, read a reputable site. If it's a site that somebody has posted up there, Jim Bobbed Leadership, it's not reputable. If you read articles from the Forbes magazine, they're written by Fortune five hundred CEOs. They kind of know what they're talking about if they could, if they can keep a company going. So I would encourage everybody to do a little, little looking into leadership of management. Um, one of the comments that was made that volunteers don't have the time to train, we have there's a, there's a difference in mindset between somebody who volunteers and somebody who's not a volunteer. I was always down there. I know one of the callers that actually, we sent him to some other state to take a truck class. Three guys went over there. They're gone for a week. The one thing about volunteers is you can't slow them down. They, if there, if there's if there needs to be some training, they'll be the first ones in line for that. But if we're not, if we don't have that mindset and that personality of a volunteer, we think that nobody wants to do it. There's a lot of people in this town that would love to volunteer at the fire department. There's a lot of people have been told we weren't hiring. There's, there's quite a few little issues there, but why we can't actually give honest opinions and factual data, but really, it's aggravating sometimes. Um, there's a lot of other stuff, like when we talked about the wildfires of twenty twenty, we used to send crews out on all the wildfires, and the city actually got paid every day. I can't remember what it was. It was like twelve hundred dollars a day for the fire engine, plus the crews that were on the engine, and people were lined up to do that. And we actually had tell people they couldn't do it because there there'd be too many people for that. Yet we can't get, we can't see, we've seen that, we've seen, want to say that volunteers don't want to show up, we can't get the dedication out of them. But I've seen it for twenty-eight years. I've seen the dedication out of volunteers. I've seen the failure points in Gladstone Fire Department. And they weren't really with the volunteers. They were more with the leadership and the the style of leadership. We have to, there is, it's, the difference between leadership of management is the same as between someone who has a a mentality to volunteer for something, somebody that doesn't. I volunteered for twenty-eight years. My wife has never volunteered once. That's not her personality. So we wouldn't expect her to understand how to recruit volunteers or keep volunteers when she doesn't know. It's it's not her personality type. Um, the discredit we've given to to the fire station, the abilities, the amount of people that we've sent that have started at Gladstone. I, right before all this started, I was actually, I wanted to make a board of different patches from different fire stations and have pass tags for people that we had sent all over the place. And that man was nice enough to give me a Portland patch, and then we ended up hiring. When we went to first full-time chief, everything just kind of fizzled out and kind of went away. But we've sent a lot of people that started out at Gladstone and have had careers, and some of those peoples have actually retired from their careers because of the opportunities. But when we're in a little tiny city that we're really on a fixed income, we can't afford to be spending extra money. I live on a street that has had no maintenance, had had one slippery seal in twenty years. The street is literally falling apart. Yet we can't afford to fix anything. But we want to split other pet money in in little pet projects when we have people that are more than willing to do the job. Um, so all I really want to say is we we really got to stop discrediting people and and listen to what they have to say. And if you want to present data and you want to present numbers, you better actually have the data and numbers to present. Stop making stuff up. When I hear four-minute response times, we had on-scene times of less than four minutes. There's a lot of times that when we, when you back from a call, we entered all the data into the computer. So the 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 company officer was seeing those times. So it's kind of hard to pull the wool over somebody's eyes when they're actually going to put the numbers in the computer. And when we're rolling out the door in less than two minutes on a lot of calls, we're, it's a little tiny, it's a little tiny town. It's not, we don't have you don't have volunteers that that live ten miles away. Most volunteers, they can be at the station in less than four or five minutes. We had, we had one who was actually several miles out of town. And he said he stopped responding because he had moved, and I went to his house. I drove back to the station. It took me four minutes to drive from over at Easton and Webster back to the station. When you have a core group of people, you get a different level of service. I've called nine-one-one in Clackamas County on a a dementia patient that wandered out of the house because the water line broke. And when Clackamas' ladder truck showed up, I told him what was going on. I was working in the neighborhood. And the officer actually looked at me and said, what do you expect me to do? When those kind of calls happen in Gladstone, we show up a shop back, squeezies, and we dry everything out. We put every bit of effort we could into our community members' property into their house and their lives. You wrote, you, you go on a call, Clackamas, they'll tell you the same thing. If they go on a call, they're going to check smoke detectors. Gladstone Fire did the same thing, but we also bring in firewood. We take out people's garbage. It is community-based. When you have a community-based group that cares about the community, it's, I, it's heartbreaking to me that the people on this panel have never been involved in the Gladstone Fire Volunteer Fire Department. You'd have a completely different look on it. Um, I have no intention of ever returning. I think it needs to return because the opportunities that it provides for for people. When my term is up here, I'm moving out of this town. I'm so, yeah, you could only get slapped around so much and I won't go too far on that, but I have no intention of staying around here because the type of people and what this town has turned into. When you grew up in a town, when you you watch TV, you see little kids getting together on the weekend to go to the local carnival. We had that in Gladstone. We don't have that anymore, but over the years, the stuff that has disappeared from this town, we either just need to take the name off the town and just get become part of incorporated Clackamas County, or we need to stick with our town and make our town the best town we can. There are a couple of those counselors that have been talking and have some plans to get the volunteer department going back again. And it would be completely different than anybody's ever seen. Unfortunately, because of serial media laws, we can't really share anything until we're ready to present some of the information. There are some benchmarks that I have that as soon as there's benchmarks in our, I am willing to to share that stuff, but we've already had monkey wrenches thrown, and people tell people's employers telling them that they couldn't talk to us about this. You got to wonder what's going on every once in a while. Um, but my view.
I'm sorry, but I I'm, we're kind of going in in different directions. I just, I thought you had a couple of salient points there too, Randy. I was taking some notes on them.
That was about it, Matt.
Just about the history. Um, so that's what I'm hearing from you, but I just want to make sure.
My main thing is let's not discredit our community. We have some great people here.
I agree with that. And I think the other counselors on the call agree with that as well. I didn't want to cut you off, but I think.
That was, that was it. I had a bunch of notes, and that's pretty much most of them. I, some of them are just data errors that were given, and if we can't give right data, don't give data at all. That's probably my main takeaway.
And I agree with that, Randy. And actually, I think that you have some data that at some point you were going to share it. So at a later date, we talked about it a a year ago, so it'd be good to see that data because I think that we probably need to do some comparative analysis of both sets of data.
Well, actually, I never actually got the data that I was wanting after a year and a half asking for it.
Okay.
I never got it. I got, twice I got stuff that wasn't even the metadata to the data I wanted. My, my goal was to build a numerical model over like a ten-year period so we'd see how these changes have affected costs, participation, everything else. But I wasn't able to get that data from anybody.
So I think the problem we have, that's.
But that's all I got. So I'm going to mute for.
Counselor Todd?
Um, yeah, I just had uh, three questions. They actually were listed in the packet. And we we discussed that, but because this is public record, and there are many people that maybe won't read all the way through the packet and uh, Chief Huffman's um, post question, what is the term of contract that we're talking about right now? Because I know Chief Brown, you brought that up, and Huffman, could you please tell us?
Uh, the questions we've been talking about with Clackamas and staff is to have a one-year trial. And then with some renewals of two years at a time, just to coincide with our budget for planning.
Okay. Um, now the one, what are the levy concerns that we have if we're not able to levies are tied into a lot of this? So what what are those thoughts on that?
If the levy uh, was unable to pass by the uh, taxpayers, uh, Clackamas would reduce the coverage to a rescue squad. And uh, we'd make all efforts to to get the levy passed.
Okay. And what was also asked by one of the uh, citizens who spoke tonight, what's going to happen to the current uh, firefighters at Gladstone if this were to go forward?
So the full-time employees are covered under state law. They'd be absorbed uh, for one year under their uh, current salary, the way I understand that. And the paid-on-call firefighters would be given opportunities to be a volunteer firefighter or a support volunteer and that Chief Brown could speak to more details about that, but that they would be given opportunities, and they do use their volunteers.
You, you okay if I just piggyback onto that, Counselor Todd?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, thanks, Chief Huffman. We do have volunteers. We have roughly sixty volunteers currently. We just graduated in the academy of eighteen more to add to the ranks of that. Um, uh, they respond out of, out of community fire stations. And so they are not only support. We do have support volunteers as well, um, that that uh, are part of rehab rigs, water tenders, things of that nature that that they respond in. But we do have uh, combat volunteers, because I'm going to use that term combat volunteers. That's not what we call them. Um, but just to give you the the, they're they're suppression volunteers. So they fight fire, they go on medical calls, they have to maintain that EMT basic certification at least, and they're trained to the firefighter one level and maintain their state certifications through us, and they're able to respond. Um, the the contract for service piece, what's what's big for me is that I'm a hit, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a student of the past. And so I I don't want to duplicate the past. And and what we learned from Estacada was if you try to uh, get into a community too quickly, um, and you don't give the citizens the opportunity to earn their trust, that that uh, the result isn't the best thing uh, ultimately for the citizens. We believe in the level of service that we provide. We believe in regionally approaching uh, the fire service is is the best thing for the public, but it's something that we have to earn. And so uh, as as Director Sering spoke to, uh, you're not going to see from me a a recommendation for a short contract for service. I'm I'm really only interested in longer-term contracts for service. Like Chief Huffman said, the one-year trial and then followed by two, a two-year and a two-year based on your budget makes sense to me. Um, and then and then talking about what this looks like past there. I want to earn the trust and respect of the of the community. I started my career as a volunteer firefighter. I um, I know the pride as as Councilman Rip uh, Ripley said, that goes into being a community responder. I remember the the tones going off in the middle of the night at two-thirty in the morning as Counselor Ripley can attest to, and you're running to the station to try to get on that rig before it gets out the door first. Because you really want to be part of that first rig. That's that's where all the, that's that's where you can have the greatest impact. So I I know that what that, what that's like. I remember what that's like. I've been fortunate enough to become and make this part of my career and to work up through the ranks of becoming a fire chief. I believe in in the level of service that that when I started my career that we offered. But the simple fact is, is that the volunteer department that I began, that I started in has now had to move to a career fire department just because of the needs of the community, as well as the lack of being able to recruit volunteer firefighters. The history of 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 this great service that we provide is all based on volunteer, on volunteer firefighters. That's that's what started the the fire service, and it's evolved into being more demanding and a more all-hazard approach, which takes certifications, all of those things. I I I I know where my roots are. And and I have great pride in in volunteer firefighting. We still have that in our organization. I have, I'm so proud of the volunteer firefighters that we have and the ones that we just swore in last Thursday. That was, that's one of the, one of the best experiences that I've had since becoming a a fire chief. Um, but I I just, I just want to make it crystal clear that the fire department, if 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 a decision is made to where Clackamas Fire can help out Gladstone, I'm interested in in a longer-term contract for services solely based on the fact that I want to earn the trust and respect of not only you, but each and every one of your citizens. That's that's important to me. To hear Counselor Ripley say about our ladder company that shows up, that's, that goes against everything that we value and everything against uh, the core values of the fire department, our mission and our purpose. And so um, I wish that I was there with you, Counselor Ripley, to be able to educate it had that happened. That's, that's not, that's not our people. That's not how they respond to calls. And I'm not saying that that didn't happen. That's not what I'm saying, but that's not our, who we are as an organization. So um, I I am fortunate, feel very fortunate to be part of an amazing culture, amazing people who put dedication and service above themselves every single day that they put on the uniform. And and so I just wanted to to just add to that piece as far as the contract for service, it needs to be longer term for me because I want to earn the respect from you, and I want to earn this respect of the community. And and this community fire service, that's what makes up Clackamas Fire. It's just a bunch of small communities that have made it made up who we are today. There's so much pride that I have of going into communities, whether it's, whether it's the the Easter egg hunt or or the things that that we offer in our communities, the parades, uh, Op Santa. All of those things have come from smaller departments. So I'm just grateful for that, for that opportunity. I just want to make sure that that was crystal clear. So thank you so much. Sorry for the rambling.
Thank you.
Counselor Todd, you had another question?
No, no, those were my questions. Thank you.
Counselor Hartman, do you have any questions?
Thank you. Um, I just want to say, you know, thank you all for being here, and I want to acknowledge that we also have forty-six people um, listening in on to this. Clearly, this is, you know, something of importance to our community. Um, and I also want to honor that, you know, I approaching this topic as a newer resident to Gladstone, uh, we're going on six years um, living here. And I I don't have the wonderful stories that I hear each and everyone have about the air raid sounds and the uh, you know, alarms and whatnot, but I can honor and appreciate um, that uh, that is an integral part of this community. Um, you know, so but for me, I I I looking at this, I don't have emotions, you know, I don't have the connection to this, but I do understand that many do. Um, and I want to appreciate that. Um, it seems like there are discrepancies in the data that we're receiving. Um, you know, we're hearing one thing in our packet and then hearing from community on on other things. And so I definitely would like to see more of a comparison on where those discrepancies lie. Um, there was comments about uh, us uh, not making proper decisions when it comes to uh, budget. Uh, and I, you know, I don't remember having those conversations when we were going through our, my first budget session um, that we were underfunding our fire department. And so I would like, you know, I would like to understand uh, where that is coming from uh, personally, and you know, where that money is going to come from if we decide to keep that, you know, as we continue to hear. We don't have additional revenue funds. We don't have that money coming in. So who is getting cut? What department is getting cut? Is it our police department? Is it our public work? Where is that money going to come from? And to know that there are other cities out there that operate their own fire departments, are they comparable to Gladstone? Are they, you know, a twelve-thousand-person town that is landlocked with no additional revenue stream? Uh, to me, I want to see that comparison and how they're able to fund it, because if other cities are able to fund it, we should be able to as well. Um, but I just would like to see that comparison. Um, I had a question on the two-point-one million. Uh, was that an annual or was that biennium? I had a question on the two point one million, uh, was that an annual or was that biennium?
Director Brecker is on as well. She might be able to answer some questions.
City Minister Bets, did you hear the question?
Yeah, I Kathy Brecker is on and I think Tammy's bringing her in.
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, the two point one million uh that was mentioned in there in the contract, I believe that was on for an annual basis. The um contract is written with it being revenue neutral or cost neutral to the city is basically what our anticipated costs, our anticipated budget is for the fire department. Each of the the remaining biennium, and that is what the cost with Clackamas would be.
Okay, thank you. Um. Yeah, I think, you know, for me, I just, I feel like there, it feels like this conversation was a long time coming. And and it feels um like there are, there needs to be a little bit of a a deeper dive. Um, because it does seem like it is very fifty-fifty. The comments are um very divided and I personally want to understand why. Um, I'm going into this, I want to provide our citizens and our community with the best services possible. So right off the bat, it feels like these contract for services is the right way to go. Uh, but I don't want to make a rash decision because it feels like there are things that are missing. Um, and I appreciate all of the effort and all the information that has gone into this. It is extremely helpful. I I think that maybe one more session or one more discussion with our community and those that are directly involved in this needs to happen just to make sure that we are moving in the right direction. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Garlington. I think you're next.
Hi, thank you, everyone. So uh I have my grandma hat on this week and if you hear Anna and Olaf, my apologies. So um, first, um, I'd like to thank Chief Huffman for the uh the paperwork that you put together. It was really good, really uh concise. There was a few questions like others that I had, but I'm sure that in all of our discussions that they will come out. Uh, the letters that the people, uh, your support team wrote, I appreciate that. I know it takes more than fifteen minutes to write those letters. Thank you for your time. Um, oh gosh, I knew this was gonna happen. So, um. So. So, okay, here's my couple of questions. So uh first, I want to say one thing. In in twenty and nineteen, in two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-one, the fire department and the police department had a one point five million dollar budget or um, uh, yeah, budget, yeah. The fire, the police department received one point five million dollars more than the fire department. This is the general budget. In two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-three, that gap was two point seven million dollars. There's your budget. Okay, thank you. Um. I know, I think that there's more discussions to have. I I think that one of the things that I take really seriously as being a counselor. Um, is is that these our firefighters, this is their job and we 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 have to be so careful with that. Um, the needs of the people, we have to be so careful with that. And with that, I I just think that there's a lot of, a lot more discussions that need to happen. I just can't help but believe there's gotta be some, oh, just, I don't know if there's other options or what. I just am not feeling this completely at this point. That, that's all I'll say right now. Thank you. My apologies.
Thank you, Greg. It looks, uh, Counselor Alexander, you had another question?
I did. I actually can't with with while while the other ones were getting asked. Um, so you say you'd like a a longer contract next. So I guess my my question would be after the first year and then you want two years and two years automatically renewed. Um, so are i- is the cost gonna go up?
Five-year contract and you 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 see uh what that is with um AV increase.
And so we we'd be able to see every year what it would go up?
Yeah, whatever the AV is.
Okay, I don't, I don't know what DA would be or is.
Typically, this last, it depends on your your area, Rick. You'd be able to, or Jackie'd probably be able to speak a little bit better to that. For us, it was three point seven five uh for Clackamas County Fire, but uh I don't know what it's been in the city of Gladstone.
And Kathy has that number for us.
We generally, we generally run about a three point two five percent increase in our assessed value each year.
Okay, thank you. Um, the other one is I just, I know other other departments I've talked to have done this. And I just wonder, Nick, do you know about, have you heard about a uh, it's a funding source? And it's for enhanced fire and police fee. And it's like, like we have all the dealerships on McLaughlin. You know, can I go, can I go talk to them and ask them about, hey, can you help with this uh enhanced uh funding fee to help our fire department? I mean, you know, it it benefits them too, correct?
Yeah, a hundred percent, but that in Washington, they do that. I know that in Washington. I don't believe Oregon has those uh uh, but I look for the city attorney there to be able to articulate that. If 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 we had that means to be able to to do this, to to do that to our commercial structures, we we would have been doing that as well.
Well, that's why I was asking. I mean, I've heard about it and and.
Washington does that.
Wash, it's Washington, okay. All right. Thank you. That's it for me. Thank you.
Counselor Hartman, you have another question?
Yes, I um forgot to ask it. I I a citizen had made a comment that um the volunteers are not paid. Can you clarify that? Um, I thought I heard them say that the on-call volunteers are not paid if we go to Clackamas.
Chief Brown, I believe she's asking, uh, so so counsel, um, and um are paid on call, are paid? We do not have any volunteers that respond on emergencies? And I can let Chief Brown answer for his volunteers if they are compensated at all.
Yeah, thank you. So we have two, we have volunteers, which uh we have, they're compensated via mileage reimbursement as well as a retirement system, uh, but they're not, they're not compensated per hour of work or anything like that. They're true volunteer firefighters. Um, the paid-on-call system is something that we do not have. We either have volunteer or we have career firefighters. And so the paid-on-call system does not fit into the into the category for us as career firefighters. Your your captain, your captains do. Um, the battalion chief does. Um, but the the paid-on-call does not fit into the same category for us. So the opportunity would be to be able to be volunteers with with Clackamas Fire. That's, that's how that would be, as long as they were able to to meet the NFPA standards, uh, the uh the fit for duty uh, physicals and and things of that nature.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
Counselor Garlington?
I just have one more really quick question. So our firefighters, although if 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 this is a model that we chose to go with, if they left our station and went to another station and worked, and we asked them to work at the wage that they're at at not their choice of a fire department, does anybody here think that that's fair? That to me, that's just like throwing somebody out in the wind and saying, here's your contract, but you know, this is what you get. But I I can't even imagine making that decision for somebody. I I just, not without hearing from them, talking to them, allowing them a say. You know, if somebody did that to me in my job, I I I would, I can't, I just can't even imagine. Would any of you do that? Could any of you even fathom having somebody tell you, well, this is just your job. You, now you're gonna do it someplace else for possibly more money, possibly less money? But the decision isn't yours. So that that whole aspect of that this is what would keep me up at night. So, there you go.
Chief Brown, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just wanted to answer uh Counselor Garlington on on that. And I just want to make sure I'm I'm understanding. Uh, I wasn't sure if you were asking me the question or if you were just making that as a statement. Are you talking about uh, the Clack, coming over to Clackamas Fire and they'd be paid less? Is that what you were? Is that what you were saying as far as your your career staff?
So full disclosure, I asked uh for the the contract for Gladstone and the contract for Clackamas.
Yes.
And and today, and I've been on the road, I was on the road for about eight hours today, but so I could not read it. But I guess what I'm saying is that if if our firefighters, whether volunteer or however that works, wherever they're asked to work, that all has to be worked, that that to me is a completely separate thing. I understand that there's a contract. But their contract is also to be able to work in their station. That's part of their contract. That's part of their want. That's why they're there. Because they want to be with us. They want to be in Gladstone. Maybe not in that cruddy little apartment, but we've promised them these things to come forward and please stay because we're we're gonna build a better station for for our employees. And then to say, yeah, well, maybe not. And, you know, even if your contract doesn't match this other, which I can't say here nor there, cause I you know, like I said, I didn't get a chance to read it, but I I just have a really hard time with um not, we heard from the one gentleman and uh what was his name? I'm sorry, he was the president of the volunteer. Why I don't know his name is probably wrong on my part as a counselor, but um Gabe Stalker, no.
Charlie.
Yeah, um, I I I think maybe as much as we've heard from Chief Huffman, which has been a lot of great information, maybe we need to hear from some of these other people and what are their thoughts and ideas moving forward and where are they? How are they feeling? You know, we are making a decision about their livelihood. And I think that that's something that has to be I I'll just be done, because I'm just saying the same thing again. So there you go. Thanks.
Counselor, I'd like to just respond quickly. The the people are 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 the fire department. The firefighters are the fire department. They're the ones running the emergencies and providing the care. When, when our service level level becomes in jeopardy and we can't provide it, we look at opportunities. The firefighters are part of that opportunity and they're part of the conversations. There's also a fear of going to a new situation, a new employer. Um, and I respect that. My primary focus is the response capabilities and the needs of the citizens of Gladstone and how we can provide that. The firefighters are part of this. I fully understand that a paid-on-call firefighter position will go away. I talk to the firefighters all the time. I understand that this is difficult. There are opportunities that come with a contractor mergers and Chief Uncle or somebody can talk to that on how that workout works out. I think another comparison would be the library situation that we had where we have to think of the employees and see what the end result is and see what the opportunity is. But I can't, I can't argue the fact that it's impactful. That that we're at that situation where our service level needs help. And how we do that is gonna have impacts. The goal is to have a positive outcome. And that's uh, and that's where we're at right now.
So I guess what I'd like to say just in in general about that is, you know, the top of this the whole thing here is whether or not we go to Clackamas. And underneath that would be our equipment, our employees and but I guess that would be it. Just our, the A and the B, those are the big things about that. And then, uh, you know, also uh Counselor Hartman, you know, talked about wanting some other information, options, things like that, you know, more discussion. And I am completely in agreement with everything that she said. Um, with the exception that I'm not sure that I want us to go to Clackamas. But uh but again, I'm with everyone there that's, the needs of the people come first. But we also, like I said, that subcategory has to be our item, our our things are, you know, what belongs to us and also our employees, because as city councilors, I've been in many meetings with all of you and I know that you care about the employees in the city. So, that's all.
Okay, so before I give any comment, which is gonna be very brief, uh, anybody else have questions uh across the council? Uh, Counselor Hartman?
Sorry, I just am I'm curious. Has any thought been put into like if we chose to fund additional FTE, the six hundred and sixty-four thousand? Where that money is gonna come from? Or what is being cut? Like, has it, like, just a general thought about where we would try to find that?
So thank you, Counselor Hartman, for that question. Where we are right now as a city council, the last direction that you gave us was to explore options with Clackamas Fire. We're presenting that to you tonight. The other options that the city council could come back to us and say, nope, we want to make it work. Jackie, you go back and you tell us what's gonna get cut to find the money to hire the six FTE that Rick needs to run his department. You guys can give policy direction uh for us to do that. And then we would come back to you and show you where those proposed cuts from the general fund would have to come from in order to make up to hire the employees in the department. If that's something a majority of the council would like us to move forward with, that's something that you could talk about at March eighth council meeting.
Okay, yeah, I I guess, I think personally, I would like to see where those cuts come from in order to have a proper comparison on whether or not it makes sense to move forward, because if it's, if we find a really creative way, then why not do that? Um, but if it is at the detriment of another one of our departments, you know, then, you know, that can push us in the right direction. So I personally, I think I would like to see what those cuts would come from in order to make a decision. Um, that's just my thought. Thank you.
Counselor Alexander?
Sorry, sorry, last one. I just touching on what Counselor Hartman just said. Why, I mean, why wouldn't like a hybrid work, where we pay certain amount and then we have volunteer? Why, why does that? I mean, what, I know all volunteer you're saying can't work, but a hybrid where we keep a few of our own, you know, our own people on and and paid and the rest come like Counselor Ripley said, you know, when when they get the call. Uh, is that, is that even been looked into or an option that, you know, could help us? That's, that's all I wanted to know. Thanks. Whoever wants to answer.
Thank you, Counselor. I'll uh address uh my point of view on that and anybody else can jump in. But to the core of it, that's why we're having this discussion now is because that model does not work. I'm not saying it doesn't, hasn't worked, and it does work in some areas. The situation of Gladstone, we're unable to recruit enough people internally within the city limits. That was before my time here. And then they dropped the borders and went farther out and tried to recruit people. And that was difficult. And the standards that we're uh putting people through now are are rigorous. And they are the the common standard in the area. And I validated that with our uh our psychologist and all the other agencies that test. So, you know, to hold to the standards of the agencies around us, we're unable to fill those positions in a model you're talking about, which is volunteer, big part-time on-call and a combination of um the full-time employees. That's what we're doing right now and it's not sustainable.
Okay, well, that's, that's why I was asking, because you know, I I I talked to uh Clackamas Community College up there and they have a, they have a program where, you know, even kids from Gladstone, they wanted to be firefighters. And you say it's rigorous to go through all that. That's, is that to get hired or is that to be a volunteer? I mean, you have to have, you have to have all those certain patients be a volunteer or is that to be a paid paid firefighter?
I believe Chief Brown can uh can validate this, but uh volunteers paid on-call and full-time firefighters are all trained to the same standard. The entrance requirements uh are, there's a minimum at the state level you must go through. But not everybody does the entrance psychol- uh psychological testing and and um background checks that most of the areas around here do. Some of the more rural areas, they wouldn't be able to get anybody. And so I think that, I think the unique situation that we've evolved into is that to provide the same level of service that's around us, we have to meet the same standards. And I'm not willing to drop standards to hire. And I'm not willing to drop standards to hire people.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I guess one last time around the councils, everybody satisfied with the questions and. Um, I just have, there's so much data and information here. I'm not going to ask anything more than just uh to uh Chief Huffman and and city administrator bets. So I'm hearing like with the six hundred and forty-four thousand, you're bringing up potentially what was it, six, six additional uh paid firefighters for full F T Es? Is that correct, Chief Huffman?
That is correct. With the uh emphasis that that's only personnel cost, there's a lot of other associated costs. That would be more towards a million dollar gap to do full-time employees.
So if I, my question to you, it's not, I'm, I don't mean it to be rhetorical, but if you were to have one point five million added to your budget, because one point five million was that uh was was referenced as the um disparity or the gap. If you were able to add one point five million, what I'm reading in your report doesn't necessarily convince me that you're going to be able to get, still get all your staffing, if you're going to still maintain the paid on-call staffing level. A or you would just be heading towards full-time staffing across the board with that addition, one, that additional one point five million. Is that correct?
I think my my point was that those full-time employees would bring up our response level to a a minimum standard. But there's, it wouldn't be sustainable uh long-term. There are other things that would have to be done to maintain that and to maintain the full service that people get when they call nine-one-one around us. So it would be a struggle to manage and maintain the department with full-time employees without the volunteer paid on-call force to back it up.
Okay, I I just, because I think when we're talking about larger amounts of money being budgeted towards the fire department, I I am just trying to understand the value of it, because I'm I'm, this is not my wheelhouse. And so I just want us to, I I'm hoping that we can kind of come up with, in subsequent conversations, we actually talk about what would get us to that standard that that doesn't have disparity with other services that surround us and what that hard budget number truly would be. And and so that's, that's why I'm asking it, and that's why I wanted to preface it with not rhetorical, because I'm not, I'm not trying to to trip you up or do a gotcha. But as we talk about one point five or two million dollars additional in the budget for fire services, I want to understand the value as a city counselor is going to potentially make that decision or make that choice. So this is going to be something I think should come forward in the subsequent conversations, and I think that that's part of the data that we're going to have to 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 really go over and look at. Uh, because I'm here and we're not going to be able to do what we need to service level wise. Uh, be business as usual, or as we are right now, uh, status quo. So I I'm just trying to understand, we're we're buying that value in one million dollar increments um with regard to potential future budgeting or going back and and reassessing the budget for the Glasgow Fire District or Fire Department.
Yes, sir, that that is, that is the whole point of this conversation, and I have to urge everybody to know that the past volunteer and paid-on-call model that Gladstone had worked. Things have changed. I'm not, I'm not referring to the past. I'm talking about the present. And the pandemic has has put a nail in it. So we are struggling to go on calls right now. We cannot respond without Clackamas and Walton Valley. Hands down, we're in a crisis to provide coverage in our own city. We we can't really think about this much longer without a decision. So, you know, in September, you gave us a direction to open a discussion for a contract. And then Counselor uh Tracy, the the value comes with that contract where we can get the service level above and beyond we could ever afford for a cost-neutral contract. To move forward is possible with these other um possibilities. But I advise against it because that's what we've been trying to do for the last two and a half years, is to make that work. We are in a deficit of training right now to, even if we recruit volunteers, we cannot get them to a level to drive the fire engine and act as an officer in a timely manner. We're we're behind the curve, and the people we have left, we only have twelve on-call firefighters. And out of our four, four full-time captains, we have one vacancy. We had another one just take a job somewhere else. So we're down to two captains, and out of our twelve paid-on-call, we have three of them with job offers. And so we are dwindling our numbers faster than we can replace them over the last year. So that's the situation we're in. I I honor and respect the past that we had. I've been a firefighter for over forty years. I started as a paid-on-call firefighter. As Chief Brown said, I I'm fortunate that I've stayed in this job and serve this community. I served our nation in the military, and I say, I serve this community the same as I do our country. There is no difference to me. This is a situation we are in, and we need action. We cannot last much longer. The emotional tie to the community firefighters is real and respected. I just ask for you to look at the broader picture of the community's uh public safety. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. So I I'm closed on my comments. I I have no further. It's obvious to me that this is a much deeper conversation going forward. I'm not even sure March eighth is going to be, I mean, e- even at that venue, there are so many unanswered questions and so many people who want to get information from a lot of different directions, city administrator bets, I mean, obviously, we're going to talk about this, but um, yeah, I, this is really complicated, very convoluted, and obviously historically um relevant. So I I'm good with that. Um, I don't see anything else unless city administrator bets. Did you want to have further comments or?
No, it's very uncomfortable. It's very emotional. It's not what any of us wanted to make decisions are regarding the fire services in our community. But we have to provide you the facts, and the facts are that we are at a critical crisis point in the services that we provide. We will regroup after this and try to understand what more information to provide you in March. But like our fire chief said, we do need to take action. So we appreciate everybody and your comments um that participated, and for those that weren't able to, if they want to send us their comments, we would like them either via email, and we can make sure the city council gets them. Um, but we will try to get some more information, and like I said, regroup and decide on March eighth where we go um from here.
Chief, did you have a final comment?
I I just wanted to ask if uh we could allow the uh chief uncle or or Dr. Houston have some final comments after listening to all this?
Yeah, I don't um, I don't see them on now. They may be in the attendees.
I I'm here.
Oh, thank you, Chief Don Call.
Yeah, I I really don't have anything to add. I I just think this was, this was democracy at its best. I mean, you got some great input. I feel for the city manager and the fire chief, uh, need to go back and regroup. But I, but I I do have to say this to the council, um, especially some of the counselors that are sitting there going, you know, is this history or is this w- w- we're we need to be in the future. And and there's one thing you really have to look at, and I agree with the gentleman that questioned the data, but you got to get good data, you got to look at it. And you got to, you got to tell yourself, what is the service level you're providing today? Not what you provided ten years ago. Not when the volunteers ran and jumped on the tailboard. I used to be one of those people. We can't do that anymore. Um, but you really need to look at, what is the level of service that's going on out there? Where are your gaps? Is it reliable? Uh, and and if you can't stand alone, you know, you have a neighbor there that's got a pretty good record. I mean, I I'm very impressed with how the their board member and their chief presented themselves tonight, and I think you really take that seriously. So with that, I'm going to try to give the city manager and the fire chief some thoughts, but, you know, uh, council, it's not going to be easy, but it's you know, y- you've got to look forward, you can't look back. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Counselor Ripley, you had your hand up?
Um, yeah, just two, two quick comments. The one thing it seems to be missing, just because we put the word community on the side of an engine on the building, that doesn't mean anything. Uh, the other thing we, we kind of need to bring in separation when we talk about police budget, fire budget. Police and fire, they're both emergency services, but they are two different breeds. A firefighter, you have type A personalities, and half of them are police officers. You have to have type A personalities, because they have to take control of situations a little bit different than a firefighter does. So we really can't compare the uh uh police, police budget to the fire department budget, just because there there night and day difference on the type of people they're looking for and the job they're doing. Um, the last thing I'll say is on psychiatric evaluations, I know a lot of people have taken it past them. Oh, my word. So these people shouldn't. The other thing I might want to think of, we could, if Shmerber was here, I'd ask him on what percentage of the police officers in the United States taken past a psychiatric evaluation, I almost bet that it's got to be close to a hundred percent. And if you look at how many people want to defund the police and how many problems with the police, all this kind of stuff, but then we go and put weight in a psychiatric evaluation. Something needs to be, something needs to be addressed on how we look at those types of evaluations, if they're, if everybody's passing them. So that's all I have.
Thank you, counselor. Was there somebody else who was trying to chime in, Tammy? I'm sorry, that we, I think we'd asked uh the director, Siri, to comment or see if he wanted to have some last comments.
I do show that he is still on the meeting.
Hi, this is Doctor Houston. You hear me okay?
Oh, Dr. Houston. Yeah, go ahead, please, sir.
Hey, so last comments, um, understand the goal is the patient. It is you, it is the citizens. It is the fact that we want to make sure that you are receiving the healthcare and EMS care that people in Portland, people in Seattle, people in Lake Oswego, and people in Escata get. Estacada is doing well now, primarily because they literally had a fire in their house. They have a prime example of why they need to be more involved in their community. So when your house is on threat for burning, and especially since Clackamas Fire didn't have that much opportunity to do it, there's a huge psychological impact and desire to be more volunteering, which I think you have to take in into account. Also, understand that a lot of the citizens and maybe even yourselves um are very happy with Gladstone. And I and I'm proud of Gladstone, and we've been involved with them for the last, I think, ten, fifteen years. But ultimately, at the end of the day, understand that the wheels are squeaking, and the only reason why they haven't fallen off is because Clackamas County Fire District One has come in more times than not to save Gladstone's ability. So you are not seeing people dying on the street. Understand that all the people that currently working and volunteering for Gladstone Fire are overworked, overburdened, tired, burnt out, and doing the job where they should have more people. I've been doing emergency medicine for eighteen years, and I am having to counsel younger physicians not to quit because of how tough this pandemic has been. So please, 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 understand, we want to do the job. But what Chief Huffman does not want, and what I do not want, is a situation where one of your citizens dies as a consequence of our inability to provide the necessary services you deserve. Comes down to money and cents, and I know there's just a lot of pride, but ultimately, at the end of the day, our goal is the patient. Period. And I I'll leave you at that.
Thank you, doctor. Okay, I think what we could do now is um see no more uh hands up. I I can't see it anyway. Um, let's go ahead and uh, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. There's a lot to talk about. This is going to go on for a bit, but um I think today we've got lots of information. So I'll entertain an uh motion for adjournment, unless staff, do you have anything to finish up with?
No, we are good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I motionally adjourn.
Go second.
Second.
So uh it's moved by uh Counselor Alexander to adjourn. I'm sorry, was that Counselor Garlington that seconded?
Me.
Counselor Todd. Okay.
Up in the corner.
So Tammy, could you call, roll, roll call vote, please?
Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Alexander?
Yes.
Counselor Tracy?
Hi.
Counselor Hartman?
Hi.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Garlington?
Yes.
Okay, the eyes have it, so we're adjourning at seven fifty-five Tuesday, February twenty-second. Thank you, everyone, and thanks to our guests for bringing us some much-needed information and perspective on this issue.